At this time, every first meeting of the year is opened up by the county clerk's office. And so this morning I'll ask Marcia Knoll to come forward and to open up the meeting, if you would please. You said January 4th or 7th?
I'm sorry, January 7th.
Okay. All right, and so at this time, before we, Marcia, actually starts swearing in the elected and re-elected officers, I'd like to take time out to recognize a retiree. We haven't done this yet, kind of felt this would be the appropriate time to do it. So, Mr. Gokener, if you'd come out front with me.
How did it feel to be retired for about a month?
It was pretty good.
Yeah.
They got a lot of times I use that term retired, right?
Yeah.
I'll stay my six feet away from you, so I don't get in trouble. But anyway, Eddie and I have known each other back when I was doing work in the city years and years ago. And I found Eddie's always using a lot of common sense. He wanted to want, if he had an issue or something was going on, he'd come to me and say, "Let's find a solution." Because I got a job to do and he got a job to do. So, little bit of highlights about Robert Bob Gokener, last I was always calling Eddie. He started as a volunteer firefighter at West Hall number five at the age of 14 or 15. And at a very early age, just started getting back to the community. I'm going to applaud him for that. That was my dad.
Your dad?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, my dad was a volunteer in his early teen years, because a lot of guys were still at work.
Right, right. So how old were you?
I was 60. Sixty, or less than that, I'm sorry. Moved into the Inwood area, right? Became a member of the volunteer fire station down there, South Berkeley. I hope this wasn't, you'd always ride along with your dad. You'd ask your dad if he'd ride along in the fire truck, and he'd say, "Jump in." You know, what a wonderful, wonderful times, Eddie. I wish we could do that these days, you know? It's just tougher talking for us to take young people with us in these days. At the age of 16, you joined South Berkeley. Won't tell you anything, keep them in groups. Now, you, I understand you jumped out of windows for a different reason than I would jump out of school with. I would probably have done it just because some girl I knew was outside, but you was jumping out there after the fire call, right? And you probably would know that, right? Because I called Hanson Young Man, you're often out that window again.
He was crazy.
He was hired by the City of Martinburg in 1977, shy of 20 years old. Worked at the Martinburg Fire Department for 32 and a half years, retired as captain. 2010, he started here in the county and started the first combination volunteer, paid volunteer fire station in the state of West Virginia. Oh, man, correct, you were correct, right? I thought this was before that. He became deputy director of Homeland Security Emergent Management in September 2016. Became the director shortly after. Here's the things that I know best about him. And I generally don't write things down, but I have to. There's so much there that I wanted to say and talk about, but... One of the things that's happened here in the county is, is you and prior president of county commission at the time, council of President Sutherland, actually have pioneered things in the state of West Virginia. And that's just the combination fire department, there's no other. Everybody in this room knows it, in the state of West Virginia. You're the first fire chief from Burke County Fire. And just recently, just recently, the Burke County Fire has received and been recognized as the first county fire department with their own FDID number in the state of West Virginia. Weird, mild thing. The crazy thing about it is, there's a lot of other counties that want to follow, and you're a quick guy. Everybody else is. So, at this time, we want to recognize you for the tenure of dedicated service and commitment to Burke County community citizens. That sort of time that you worked here for the county council, about once or longer, future six years minimum, here as the county councilperson. That's essentially going during time as a chief. Thank you, sir.
There's a lot of people around me and beside me, sometimes in front of me. You gotta trust me, but they're willing for me. That helps me to where I am today. My family. My work family. And your family. You guys need to protect me, to take care of me. I tell you that all the time. Take care of one another. I've been in a position that I've been able to take care of me, Rose, a lot of times. I'm not very much. And it's a difficult, it's a pain, and needless you, you can't take care of yourself. Just take care of one another. I ask you, hey, don't break out if you break. Take care of people. Take care of the very world. Very proud of you. Have a son. If there's a same job you got to be led there, you've been on market for 18 years, you take care of people. What you got, hopefully, come. These things would not have happened without the investment that the county has made in public safety to take care of the people. That wasn't because they wanted to spend money, but they kind of need to spend some money to be able to make sure that people got a fight truck in the park here. And that's what it's all about, is people getting properly called for. So, thank you guys for what you do today. I thank you for what I know you'll do tomorrow. I love you, I love my family, and thank you, family.
Eddie, I did forget one thing, and you touched base on it, is your family has been a history of public service, starting with your grand, your father, you and your son Jason. Each public safety person out there takes a special person to do that. You know, you, I say this all the time in the fireborne, I say it in the public, many, many times, as a volunteer, you put your fire station in front of your family. You go there, you clean that fire call, you fight the fire, you clean the fire apparatus when it comes back in. And 90% of the time, you're taking your children with you, and that's why you have this rich history of families being in the fire departments. And most of all, you put your life on the line to protect other people that you don't even know. But maybe, maybe, I'd like to take this time out to recognize each and every one of our public safety people, not only fire, but police and land, all of them, because of huge commitment and knowledge. And as Eddie said, it takes the family. Because a lot of times on tour, and your family, they awake, just like everyone in this room, I'm hoping my loved ones come.
Today, we will participate in laying a brother firefighter to rest. Senior Airman Logan Young was killed after a barn fire. These guys sitting here today have made arrangements for them to go to the, you know, paying respect to them. My family, we couldn't handle more, so we're going to see them. Paying our respects to the local, our local family. So, tomorrow's not promised. Please, now, take care of one another. Thank you.
All right. Eddie Gokener, I hope you enjoyed your retirement, it's time to get back to work. Marcia, if you would do the honors. You want to swear in, each, best swear in the new councilperson first. Eddie, if you want to go down out front with Marcia, and she'll swear you in, and then we'll swear each and every one on the phone.
Do you, J. Edgar Gokener, solemnly swear that you will uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of West Virginia, and that you will execute faithfully the duties of the Burke County Councilperson to the best of your ability and judgment, so help your body?
He says South Paul.
I thought we'd have to hold his paper sideways to see it, and to read it.
Am I next?
Do you, James P. Whitaker, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of West Virginia, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a councilmember of the Burke County Council, so help your body?
I will. Right here?
Right there. Thank you.
I don't have it.
No?
That they've already.
We did, we were sorry.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Well, I forgot Jim was re-elected, when it said...
Because three of us have come together.
Okay, all right. My mistake. See, Marcia's doing better than I. All right, at this time, at this time, we want to, we'll have the election for president. So, at this time, I'll accept any nomination for president for the year 2021.
I move that we nominate Doug Copenhaver for president for 2021.
Second.
Motion been made, second, any discussion? If not, on favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries, and I abstain. Need a motion for vice president for 2021? I'd like to make a motion, well, I can't make a motion, so, just before man is president.
I'd make a motion that councilperson, Jim Whitaker, be nominated for vice president for the year 2021.
Motion been made, that we have a second. Motion's the second, any discussion? If not, on favor say aye. Anyone opposed?
Abstain.
The motion carries. Now, you have to swear us in. That works. I knew there was more swearing.
We're swearing at.
Yeah, we're custom.
Do you, Doug Copenhaver, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of West Virginia, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as president of the Burke County Council to the best of your skill and judgment, so help your body?
I do.
Hello again.
Do you, James P. Whitaker, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of West Virginia, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as vice president of the Burke County Council, to the best of your skill and judgment, so help your body?
I will.
All right, let's take a quick break, so we can take some photos, if anybody wants to take a photo with Eddie on recognizing him for retirement. So, let's take a quick break. We're back in session. I want to go back and open up the floor to anyone that wants to speak, tell any good stories about Chief Gokener. Anybody out there wants to, want to say anything?
Yeah, I'll try to be serious about getting upset, because...
We know how emotional you can get.
Yeah, yeah. Listen, man, we talked about this, and we've talked about this, but we always kind of put that day off, and didn't want it to come, and it came. Made a lot of us have to step up. Chief was a guy that, he was always, he's always on top of the game. Taking sure that things were taken care of. But I feel that, you know, he nurtured Lieutenant Sawyer and myself. But I feel that, you know, he's, he nurtured Lieutenant Sawyer and myself very well. I don't want to leave Lieutenant Shankout. And, but, I, I, we're doing okay. We're doing okay. But I just, I want everybody to know that I'm a married man ever since I came from my... Grandfather was at South Berkeley. It's like, his dad did with them, my grandfather did with me. At the age of sixteen, I laid this one fire department on my foot. And, yeah. Eddie kind of went on to Martinsburg and the South Berkeley days were kind of limited, but our families have always been pretty close. And when we get back to work for the county, that bond with them and I, I think grew stronger than that bond ever was. And I knew day or night that if I needed something, I had to pick up the phone and be there. You're a great man. A lot of people still love that stuff about you. They were ice cream to many people. And, but, hey, look, you got a hard goal. You're one of a kind. Things will be harder to replace you. And I can tell you, man, you struggle a little bit, but you know you're only a tough way. Thank you for nurturing me the last ten years and getting me to where I am today. I know you always say it took place those. Everyone had more of a steady hand than I did. I appreciate you for your guidance. Appreciate you for what you've gotten our department. Hope you could be a part of us, you know, to survive today. And thank you. Good luck. And you're only a tough way. You got an open door policy.
So, I've only worked with Chief Copenhever for about five years. I come from a different world when I come into the emergency management field. Thinking, what did I get myself into when I first stepped in? But working for Chief Copenhever has been very, very good. It's been great for the, for the past five years. We always, we work together well. We always complement each other. There was, we each had our strong points. We put our heads together. And between the two of us and all the guys, there wasn't nothing that, that, that we couldn't accomplish and that we couldn't do. So, when there was, there was a call for assistance, one thing I've learned that Eddie always said, we don't say no. We help people. No matter what it is, we may not be the right person to help them, but we can connect those dots and get any type of help that anyone would need. Eddie pushed that, that was one of his big drivers, something that, that's really stuck with me and we continue to do that. I'm, I'm going to keep it short, but I'm going, I do, and I'm going to continue to miss Eddie in the office. And, but yet today, even though you retired, retired from that position and moved into the other position, I know that I can call at any time that I need assistance in any way. And it's there. Alright. So, that call for help, if I call for that help, I know that it's still there. Thank you.
Anyone else? And Randy, I'll touch it on this just one last time. I know when a call comes in or somebody asks for help or you got to go to the fire hall, you, it's very hard to say no. You go. But, but a lot of the ones that historically, I guarantee you, each and every one says no to is your family. No, I can't do this because I got to go. No, I can't be there for that game because I got to go. Alright? Candy's over, sir. Yeah, you're right.
That's one thing that I forgot to add, that, you know, something that Chief Copenhever always, always stood, you know, take care of your family. As a matter of fact, take care of your family. Family is the spirit.
Right. Yep. Thank you, Randy. Anyone else? Alright, this time we'll get started.
I'd like to say one other thing, if you don't mind.
Sure.
You know, last week, about ten minutes till three, I, I received a phone call, two minutes, three in the morning, that there, that there'd been this accident on the fire ground. And I immediately said, I'm on my way. I'm, I'm on my way. It was a short period of time later, councilperson Copenhever was on his way. County administrator Alan Davis was on his way. So, guys, know, and you know me, but, but these other guys got you back too. They, they care about you. And, you know, a lot of places that wouldn't happen. But I'm glad that, that I'm part of an organization that does happen. And it happens on both sides. You know, we, we got to take care of one another. And I, I just didn't want that to get back today because it was very much appreciated to, to have the president of the county council and the county administrator there with us to try and help start moving forward. So, thank you.
And, and I have to say that the other three council people didn't get a phone call from me until later that day, so they would have been there as well. Alright, any items from the public? Thank you. Alright, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move we approve the agenda for Thursday, January the seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, if there's no modifications.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Davis, you have some internal budget revisions?
Purchase order.
Purchase order, I'm sorry. I'm...
Man, you're running...
Three times today.
Yeah, dude.
I'm trying to tell you something. You need to replace me. Purchase order. Any questions on the purchase order? Hey, I knew there wasn't a problem with Tracy.
It was a long purchase order.
Alright.
Three weeks worth. It had some length to it.
Internal budget revision. Mr. Davis, you have three.
Yes, sir. I have three internal budget revision requests for the council's consideration. The first is from Gary Wine for Department four twenty-eight Information Technologies. Mr. Wine's requesting that he be allowed to decrease line three forty-one Supplies Materials by ten thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and needs eleven cents with sixty-five point seven one percent spent to date. An increased line two twenty-three Professional Services by ten thousand dollars. That line currently has an unencumbered fund balance of three hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-eight cents with ninety-nine point one one percent spent to date. The next request is from the previous sheriff, Sheriff Keller. It was actually submitted on December twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. Request is to decrease line three forty-one Supplies Materials by two hundred and eight dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance was ninety, is ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and forty-eight cents with thirty-two point three seven percent spent to date. An increased line two sixteen Maintenance Repair Equipment by two hundred and eight dollars. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of seventy-five cents with ninety-nine point nine nine percent spent to date. And the final request again is from Mr. Wine at Department seven one seven, which is your central garage account. Mr. Wine's requesting that he be allowed to decrease line two seventeen Maintenance and Repair Autos by eight thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twelve cents with twenty-three point four five percent spent to date. An increased line two twenty-six Insurance and Bonds. And if you'll recall, that's the line that we actually pay for repairs to our vehicle fleet that falls under insurance that we get reimbursed for. Increase that line item by eight thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is four thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars with sixty-nine point six eight percent spent to date.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis? None, I'll go on to the change in status. We have a new hire recommendation received from Allen Davis County Administrator for Matthew Homestead as a Policy Strategic Planning Coordinator with an annual salary of fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars effective January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. We have a new hire recommendation received from Honorable Virginia Sign Circuit Clerk for Lee Michelle Frith as a deputy clerk with an annual salary of twenty-six thousand, eight thirty-two effective January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. We have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for Thomas Young as chief deputy with an annual salary of eighty-seven thousand, six eighty-eight effective January first, two thousand and twenty-one. We have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess for Marlene Sigler as a clerk with an annual salary of twenty-five thousand dollars effective January seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Now, the change in status received from Mike Line, chief deputy marshal for the following employees: Tammy Hawkins, fifteen years of service. She will go from forty-one thousand, four seventy-five to forty-two thousand, five fifty-four effective December fifth, two thousand and twenty. Teddy Sahonic, fifteen years of service. He will go from forty-one, four seventy-five to forty-two, five fifty-five, uh, four effective June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. Change in status received from Jennifer Swisher, Director nine one one for Allison Litton. She is going from Senior Telecommunicator to Su- Supervisor. She will go from forty-five, seven fifteen to forty-eight, eight seventy-three effective December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Change in status received from Jennifer Swisher, Director nine one one for Kimberly Barrett. She is going, getting a step increase, an increase from Certified Training Officer. She will go from forty-eight, five to forty-nine thousand, three seventy-three effective December ninth, two thousand and twenty. Change in status received from Tim Zai, Director of Community Corrections for the following employees for Certified Handgun Training Course. Eric Squires, his salary will go from thirty-two thousand, one fifty-six to thirty-two thousand, six fifty-six effective November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Charles Vassilio... Vassilio, his salary will go from forty-three thousand, one forty-five to forty-three thousand, six forty-five effective November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Change in status received from Allen Davis County Administrator for Tim Zai for a Certified Handgun Instructor Training Course. His salary will go from seventy-five thousand, three seventy-six to seventy-five thousand, eight seventy-six effective November, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Change in status received from Mike Line, Chief Court Marshal for Donald Devon... Devine, I'm sorry. For salary increase for years of service, he will go from thirty thousand, eight forty-four to thirty-two thousand, one fifty-six effective January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Letter resignation received from Animal Control for Loren Hardy effective December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Any questions or corrections on my pronunciation or the change in status? Alright, we have approval of minutes in our pack of December tenth, two thousand and twenty. I was not present, so would like to, for someone to make a motion to...
Make a motion that we accept the minutes for December tenth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries and I abstain from that vote.
I abstain also, sir.
Moving on to the county council calendars, we'll be here next Thursday on the fourteenth in the chamber. The following Monday on the eighteenth, the county government will be closed for Martin Luther King Day on boards and commissions. Doesn't look like anything the rest of the week. On Monday, the eleventh at two P M, L E P C, four P M, E P, Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority, five P M, Water District, six P M, Airport Authority, six P M, Fireman Protection. Tuesday the twelfth at two P M, Central Dispatch, which I think that's been moved. Going to be moved to February or March, Tracy, I think. Wednesday, the thirteenth at nine thirty A M, Development Authority, six P M, Roundhouse Authority. Thursday, the fourteenth at six thirty P M, here in the chambers of fire board. Any changes or corrections on boards and commissions? We have a grading bond release rental pro, for rental properties, falling waters, industrial center lot three B, tracking numbers R zero one nine eight two dash one nine. Engineering department has made that recommendation. Any questions or concerns about that? We have a council check request from the county clerk's office in the read ahead and the finance department. Any questions on that? If not, at this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, on favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Good morning, Mr. Hess. You have some exonerations?
I do. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I have five office error corrections we have made in the last couple of weeks for personal property and has listed there for reasons. But the total was to eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-six cents for the...
I entertain a motion on the five personal property tax exoneration due to Officer. Motion been made, second. Any discussion? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hess.
Thank you.
Board meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I didn't have any meetings scheduled, but I do want to congratulate Rachel Snadley on becoming Region Nine Planning and Development Executive Director. And I also want a congratulation to Bill Clark, who retired as Region Nine planning and development council executive director and is now a member of the board and county commission.
Jumped right in that seat, huh?
Man.
These people are not getting their sort of retirement, are they?
Yeah. And, Mr. Barnhart, if I can touch, Rachel moving up to Region Nine, congratulate her as well. And she's done a wonderful job for the county council on multi-million dollar worth of grants that she got for us over the years.
And we hope that will continue because she's still in the grant business. And I'm sure she'll work with Tracy and whoever her replacement is.
Right.
Make his first run.
Yeah, yeah. It's, uh, she's done a wonderful job for us. Anything else, Mr. Barnhart?
Uh, just a minute.
You look pretty dapper there this morning.
I feel dapper.
Okay. Ms. Malt?
Well, going along with Rachel, when she took over there, she really expanded the program. We had some grants, but she really opened it up. So, really congratulations to Rachel. I don't have a lot of meetings. The roundhouse, uh, the structural engineer is there today, going over the roof. This is something that wanted to get done. Next week, I hope to have Josh Bowers, still will work for the frog and the, uh, burnt-out roundhouse available to give to everybody because he told me last night that he'd have it for next Wednesday. I should have everybody's copies at that time. And regarding the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, I'm working with Tina in the chamber and she's getting the C V B and Main Street and myself. And we also have some commitments from the D A R and those organizations to start getting this program for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary for two thousand and twenty-two. Meetings this Friday. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malt. Mr. Whitaker?
Yes, sir. I had a planning commission meeting on Monday. We elected a new, uh, slate of officers. Ms. Barnhart continues to be president and we have a new vice president, Tim Lewis. And we had a small group that came in from Hickory Run subdivision out in the Hedgesville area trying to reestablish the, uh, the continuity of a homeowners association again. There was a good bit of concern about some of the road conditions in the beginning of their subdivision when it was started back in the nineties. And from then on, it, uh, we had a few public hearings and that was about it.
It brought to my attention last night and I, kind of like just a conversation with, uh, that, and we all know that planning commissions are probably, have controversies and audiences that are quite frequently that may not agree with some things and create chaos. And I was told that it's nice to have court marshals in the room when that happens. So, make sure telling you and Heather that if, if you think it's going to be like that way, just get ahold of Mike and we'll get some of the people there. And it goes, it absolutely is tremendous. just get ahold of Mike, and we'll get some of the people there, and it goes, it absolutely is tremendous security and tremendous help, knowing that you have backup. Especially with what's going on with recent.
You know, that's a good point. Uh, right now, I think some of the controversy that we do have is through the telecommunications of Zoom.
I know.
So, it can be, it can be challenging, I mean, there's a lot of passion that people have about their property and what goes on beside their property.
I understand.
And it's very understandable.
Councilperson Gokenhour, I know you, you haven't been in any meetings, but anything you want to report on?
I've assisted the fire service in their, uh, incident debriefing, uh, dealing with the firefighter fatality. Uh, last Saturday, I was asked to take care of getting county fire apparatus on the bridge, uh, all the bridges in West Virginia, uh, to pay the respects as they brought, uh, Airman Logan Young's body back to Winchester. And yesterday evening, I was on a Zoom meeting with, uh, James Rumsey representatives, uh, the fire service representatives, looking at trying to create and build a fire school, uh, a fire training academy. So, very infant.